Mr. Clerk, if you will please call her on.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Van Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Protem in District Five Alderwoman Dr. Estella Edward Shabazz.
Present.
Chairman in District Four Alderman Nick Palumbo.
Present.
Vice Chair and District Three Alderwoman Linda Wild O'Brien. Post One Alderwoman Carolyn H. Bell. Post Two Alderwoman Alicia Miller Blakely.
Present.
District One Alderwoman Bernetta B. Lanier.
Present.
District Two Alderman Dietrich Leggett.
Here.
And District Six Alderman Curtis Purtee.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All rise. A call this meeting of the Savannah City Council to order today is Thursday, August the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, time is two oh five P. M. We want to thank everyone for joining us back at home and across our various social media platforms and of course, on our award-winning SGTV. Here in Savannah, we say that Savannah will be a safe, environmentally healthy, and economically thriving community for all. And for us, all means all. It's my pleasure today to introduce our invocator for today and a young man that I'm extremely proud of. Pastor Derek L. Grant was born and raised in Savannah, Georgia, where he attended local schools and later pursued his education at the Savannah State University.
Yes.
Growing up in the church, he accepted the Lord Jesus Christ at a young age. I guess he didn't have much choice.
That's right.
Embracing his early calling in his life. In August of two thousand ten, he was ordained as a minister, marking the beginning of his journey in pastoral leadership. With a heart for empowering others, Pastor Derek launched Ignite Ministry and Marketplace in two thousand eighteen. Through this initiative, he has been equipping individuals to unlock their full potential and excel in both ministry and the marketplace. His passion lies in bridging faith in everyday life, helping people to thrive spiritually, personally, and professionally. In two thousand twenty-three, Pastor Derek answered the call to serve as the lead pastor of the Sanctuary of Praise, also known as the Lighthouse, under Bishop Jacqueline Gilbert Grant. Today, he continues to serve and lead with vision, faith, and a deep commitment to building lives, strengthening families, and impacting the community for the Kingdom of God. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to spend some time with Pastor Derek. The Sanctuary of Praise was in Garden City, but I had to go to Garden City and get Sanctuary of Praise back in Savannah, Georgia. So now they are now on Waters Avenue. And we're excited not only about their beautiful sanctuary, but also the ministry that will be coming forth from this great house of God. Ladies and gentlemen, Pastor Derek L. Grant.
To Mayor, City Council, can we bow our heads? Father God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we thank you for today. God, we thank you for bringing us here together, letting no hurt, harm, or danger come among us in the name of Jesus. Lord, we sent out a special prayer today among this council meeting, oh God, that you might be seen, God. God, I pray for unity in the community. God, I pray for the acts of violence right now, God, that we stop the hand of violence over our city in the name of Jesus. God, we call back the, we call back those things back to our city, God. We call back love. We call back peace. We call back unity. We call back understanding, letting us know that there is no greater power than the power of Jesus. God, we thank you for uniting us in one accord, oh Lord, that we pray, oh God. We ask that you bind us together in unity, oh God. We pray for each council member. We pray for the mayor, that the decisions that they make, oh God, you might be glorified. We, in this season, we ask that you remember Romans thirteen and seven, God, where you said that this season will be that which have called our community together in city council. We pray that the city council members learn how to get along with one another, oh God, and bind them together in love, only causing them to see your glory, oh God. We stop the hand of the enemy in its track, in the name of Jesus. We pray for prosperity in our city. We call those things back to our city that we once lost, oh God. We ask that you do those things in the name of Jesus, that we pray. And it's in your name that you get the glory, the honor, and the praise, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I ask now that we honor our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before you take your seats, I want to take a moment of privilege to ask for your thoughts and prayers as we lift up our friends in Minneapolis. I was in Minneapolis yesterday and then learned in real time about what was happening. People should be able to go to church and be okay. Babies should be able to go to school and be okay. So to be at church and school and be victimized in such a way. There comes a time where thoughts and prayers are not enough, you have to take action. But what we could do here is certainly lift up those families, those mothers, those young people whose lives will forever be impacted, and pray that we're able to find a better way and do a better way. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? May their memories be a blessing and may we do better. Please have a seat. Doc, Dr. Grant, I'm calling you Dr. Grant, so thank you so much, Pastor Grant. We appreciate it. We're looking for great things coming out of Sanctuary of Praise on Waters Avenue in Savannah, Georgia. Second District.
Good afternoon.
All right. So for adoption, I have some additions just under presentations, so we can adopt the agenda with those.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, sir.
Okay, good afternoon.
I would like to make a motion for the first item on our agenda. For the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for August the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second. Then probably move the second at all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Also would like to make a motion for items number two and three and four. And those are?
Your second.
Second.
Item two, for the approval, approval of the work session, executive session held on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five at eleven o'clock A. M. Item number three, the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five at two o'clock P. M. Item four, the approval of the minutes for the show cause hearing for Henry Street Bistro, held on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at six fifty-two P. M. And also making the adjustments that the mayor has stated.
Second.
Probably will be seconded all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. On last, the fourteenth, the city council held an executive session regarding items related to personnel litigation and real estate. Asking for a motion, I'd be authorized to sign the affidavit attesting that we discussed those items and no votes were taken during that session.
So move, sir.
Second.
Then probably move the second at all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, a couple of things we want to do, and first I'm going to, it's one I'm adding. Now come on down. Come on, yeah, come on up, come on, come on, come on, come on. Y'all get my round, you can clap for them. Here in, in America, there are many things that we take for granted. And I will tell you that the rights and the privileges that we enjoy are not automatic. Someone struggled, someone fought, someone sacrificed to have it this way. When we talk about forty-hour work weeks, when we talk about paid leave and vacation leave, when we talk about issues of health insurance, it is the American labor movement to help make that happen. So because this week leads up to Labor Day, I'm glad to have the Working Savannah Task Force, also known as Savannah Regional Central Labor Council, for this proclamation in the rees. Whereas the strength, prosperity, and the well-being of our cities, state, and nation have been built upon the dedication, skill, and sacrifice of working men and women across all professions and industries. Whereas the labor movement and labor organizations have played an essential role in securing safe working conditions, fair wages, reasonable hours, benefits, and protections that uplift not only workers, but their families and communities. And whereas in Savannah, the contributions of labor have shaped our economy, strengthened our neighborhoods, and advanced our shared values of dignity, opportunity, and justice for all. And whereas the Savannah Regional Central Labor Council, under the steadfast leadership, I hear you, Lord, whatever you're saying. Oh, it's you, okay. Under the steadfast leadership of his president, Christie Hume, has been a vital partner to the city of Savannah in advancing policies and programs that support working families, encourage job growth, and expand pathways to prosperity. And whereas the celebration of Labor Day provides a moment to honor the achievements of our workforce, recognize the solidarity and resilience of labor organizations, and recommit ourselves to ensuring that every worker in Savannah has the opportunity to thrive. Now therefore, I, Van R. Johnson, the second mayor of the city of Savannah, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Monday, September first, two thousand twenty-five, as Labor Day in the city of Savannah. And I call upon all citizens to join me in recognizing and celebrating the historic and ongoing contributions of the labor movement and labor organizations to the strength of our great city and nation, and witness wherever I've set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Savannah to be a fix on this day, signed by me and attested by our clerk, Mark Massey. Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Johnson, for recognizing the working men and women of Savannah. On behalf of the Savannah Regional Central Labor Council and all of our affiliates, I am honored to accept this recognition. Labor Day is more than a holiday to us. It's a reminder of the sacrifices and struggles that built the rights in which we enjoy today. Fair wages, safer workplaces, a voice on the job. Our unions continue to fight and protect, we fight every day to protect and expand those rights so that every American has the opportunity to share in the American dream. This Labor Day, we celebrate the strength of working families, and we recommit ourselves to solidarity, because we know when we stand together, we can achieve anything. Thank you and happy Labor Day.
Thank you, and we have, we have different labor folk, and I think the interesting thing about labor is, labor is us. These are our neighbors. These are folks that we see every day, and so I'm going to have them introduce themselves and their union and their local, and we can start from where, okay, here we go, there we go.
I'm Rocky Reed, sixteen-year bus operator at Chatham Air Transit. I'm also on the executive board with the Savannah Regional Central Labor Council, and I'm also the vice president of the Amalgamated Transit Union Local Thirteen Twenty-Four over at Chatham Air Transit.
All right.
My name is Raymond McCullough. I'm the business manager for Crawford's Local Two Fifty-Six. I've been a proud member since nineteen ninety-two, thirty-three years in the craft, and looking forward to retirement, thanks to a union.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Teresa Watson, President of Savannah Federation of Teachers, Local Two Thousand Sixty-Nine. I represent teachers and all classified employees of this great city, and I'm happy to be here.
All right.
I'm Bruce Wheeler, President of the American Federation of Musicians, Local Four Four Seven Seven Oh Four. Also, I'm a delegate to the Central Labor Council, and I'm a member of RUFF, Retirees Unite for the Future. Thank you.
I'm Rick Ellison. I'm a proud president of RUFF, Retirees Unite for the Future. I just want to add that we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for our union. They gave us the seed money over seventeen years ago, when Philly was around and got us started. And we've done good in the, in the eyes of the public ever since. I want to thank Christie, I really want to thank her husband, and all the union movement that have supported all we do, and we do a lot, so thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is George Boardnave. I'm a New Orleansian, but I'm assigned to Savannah from the American Federation of Teachers. I was here with the crew for the election, the past presidential election, in which Savannah carried the region. We did very well here, and I work with my sister right here, Teresa. And I tell you, we met with the superintendent today, and you all are going to see some good things happening with the school district. We had a very good meeting. We addressed a lot of issues of concern to not just the school district, but to the city. So I appreciate being here and thank you. I met the mayor about three weeks ago on the plane, and I'm happy to be here. Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, I'm Beth Nelson, and this is Judith Moore. I'm the Savannah Field Steward for IOXY Local Four Ninety-One. That's the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees. So we represent the film and television workers that work here in Savannah. So thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rodney Lovett. I'm the steward for the maintenance department in, at the Savannah, Chatham County Public School. I'm also the executive vice president for the Savannah Federation of Teachers, along with Ms. Teresa Watson, and thank you all for honoring us.
Linda Wild O'Brien, proud member of RUFF for over a decade. We do amazing things in this community, from teachers to crime preventions and vigils, and she doesn't want to introduce herself, this is our secretary. She's been holding that position, and we appreciate Margaret. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Margaret, and I've been a member of RUFF since we've moved here in two thousand thirteen, and we do a lot in the community, and we continue to be happy to do so in helping our seniors.
Thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention the two council people that are local, Iowa Local Fourteen Fourteen. Please stand up.
Did we get everybody? Did you, did you come already? Come on. Come on.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for having us here. My name's Randy Zirker. I'm the staff local representative for the Savannah Federation of Teachers, parent professionals, and school-related personnel. We seem to be well represented here today, and we do appreciate y'all.
Saturday, Christie and her crew?
Sunday.
Sunday, Sunday, I'm sorry. At, at Lake Mare from, what time, Christie?
Eleven to three.
Eleven to three, you're all invited. Come out and celebrate and see what the union is doing in Savannah. Thank you, Christie.
It's important, Labor Day.
Thank you all so much. Let's give another round of applause, and again, as you, as you enjoy Labor Day, remember someone worked to get you there. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take another moment of personal privilege to move some stuff around, because I see some really smart folks here, and I want to get them back to where they are. So I want to ask the president of the Savannah State University, the president of Georgia Southern University, the president of Savannah Technical College to come on up, and I'm just feeling really smart in my spirit right now. And we want to do a presentation acknowledgement for the city of Savannah's Bridge to Success Student Internship Program and our inaugural cohort, so who's?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Jeffrey Grant, Human Resources Director for the city of Savannah. It's a joy today, and I say it's a joy because you all made a commitment to a strategic plan that said that we are to always be a high-performing government. And as a part of that, you all also said that we should provide responsive, inclusive, and innovative services. And then a part of that also, you wanted to build talented and engaged workforce of great public servants, committed to providing exceptional services to residents. So it's my honor, Mayor, Council, City Manager, Executive Team, and the city of Savannah, that it's official. The city of Savannah has three signed memorandums of understanding with Savannah State University, the Savannah State University.
That's right.
I'm going to take a little personal privilege, the Georgia Southern University. On behalf of my colleague, Ryan Foley, I'll add it in there, the Savannah Tech College. And this is for our first Bridge to Success internship program. And as many of you all know, that name is symbolic, because bridges provide access, stability, connectivity, and serve as critical links between regions. And in this case, between our local institutions and the city of Savannah. And the purpose is to provide a safe and successful passage to lifelong careers as great public servants. It's no secret, our goal was to build a bridge that was transformational, sustainable, and stood the test of time, and carved the path of our, of success for our future workforce. For many of you all know, a large and complex bridge takes three to five years to build. And similarly, this one took three. I remember the first email with Dr. Kim. Where's Dr. Kim? Yes, and we talked on the phone with myself and my team, and we, we visioned it out. And we said, we got to be strategic and intentional. We don't want to just do something that goes away. We want to do something that stands the test of time. And I remember Dr. Nicole Cannonier, when we had the similar conversation, and Kendria Lee from Georgia Southern, similar conversation, and Ryan Foley, president from Savannah Tech as well. Interns are two times more likely to stay with an organization within their first five years than somebody who is not an intern, who hasn't interned with the organization. This is about pipelines. This is about building the future of Team Savannah. And not only that, it's about building regional partnerships, another thing you made a commitment to on G P S, with our local institutions. Just a little bit about the program, we will see in the next five years, over a hundred interns come through Team Savannah. Come on, man. These interns will work at least twelve and a half to sixteen hours per week. The first cohort will start the first week of September. Yes, we have three institutions up here, but it's not limited just to our local institutions. Other, other institutions can participate, other students can participate in this internship program. These students will also make eighteen dollars an hour. It's paid internship, not unpaid. And not only that, this will be a competitive process. It'll be a competitive process for these students, but it'll be a competitive process internal to our departments. They have to build a business case on how they're going to provide an exceptional experience for these students. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce our partners from First Savannah State University, the Savannah State University. And I'm going to read a proclamation that is attributed to all the institutions, so I'll read it on behalf right now, and then I'll allow our Savannah State to give some remarks, as well as Georgia Southern, and then Savannah Technical College. The city of Savannah internship program memorandum of understanding between the mayor alderman and the city of Savannah, the board of regents of the university system of Georgia, by and on behalf of the Savannah State University. Whereas the city of Savannah and Savannah State mutually recognize the need to establish a partnership to promote student engagement in local government. Savannah State University students will aid city of Savannah leaders in the design and implementation of innovative approaches and solutions to challenging public problems. Whereas Savannah State University will provide student interns to the city of Savannah for participation in an immersive and meaningful learning experience that equips students with the skills and experience necessary to launch successful careers. Therefore, with the intent to create partnership that is beneficial to both parties, the city of Savannah and Savannah State University have authorized the execution of this memorandum with respect to the cooperative efforts in support of the city internship program. The undersigned be duly authorized and have signed this memorandum. Jay Melder, our mayor, as well as Savannah State University, Georgia Southern University, and Savannah Technical College. Everybody give them a hand. Dr. Whirl?
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Mayor, Council. We appreciate this historic moment. We appreciate your investment in our talent, the future of our students, and more importantly, the future of this community. This is a phenomenal day, not only for Savannah State, but our peers here at Georgia Southern, Savannah Technical College, because we know that we have the best and brightest students in this region, and we want to keep them here. Many of our students desire to work, live, play in the Savannah region, and we know that this is a phenomenal opportunity for them to gain lifelong skills, but more importantly, a sustainable career that has sustainable income. And so we appreciate you valuing the students at Savannah State University. We have many alums right here on this council within these chambers, starting with our mayor. We have thousands of alumni that live in this, this community and call this a proud, proud home. And so on behalf of the Savannah State University, our students, our future students, our alumni, we appreciate and we will uphold our part of this M O U. I do want to thank members of the Savannah State team, those of you who are in attendance, could you please stand? We have our provost, the dean of our college of business, we have faculty members, our government relations team. We appreciate you all, because you all did the hard work of getting this M O U done, so thank you. And we look forward to many, many students not only being a part of the internship program, but hopefully, permanent employees of the city of Savannah. Thank you very much.
And Dr. Kyle Marrero from Georgia Southern University.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Well, remind me never to speak after President Whirl, he's amazing. I'm so excited for Savannah to have you here and as a collaborator, as a partner. Look forward to the future. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Van Johnson. Thank you, aldermen and women, thank you so much. Senior manager, Melder, thank you for your vision and your courage, your leadership team to put this together, because of our five thousand seven hundred graduates last year, what truly will prepare them beyond their degree that they put up on a wall is that experience, that experiential learning that they have in the workplace. And for you to provide that really exemplifies your commitment to education and workforce here, and that we don't have brain drain, they stay here within our community as our proud graduates of all of our institutions. And I can tell you, this is an exciting time. You have incredible leadership with Ryan Foley, with your main whirl, and together, we're going to make sure that we educate this region and propel workforce for this region. Thank you so much for this.
And Dr. Foley.
Thank you. It's not very, not my favorite thing to go after these two right here. Mayor, alderman, and woman, thank you so much for having us here today. This is a monumental time for us. I tell you, Jeffrey was singing my. I tell you, Jeffrey was singing my love language a few minutes ago when he's talked about creating a pipeline straight from our students to, directly to our employers here in our region. And that's exactly what we do. That's our mission for all of our educational institutions here, so this just makes sense. Anytime we can give our students real-world experience, makes them that better employee once they leave us. And so thank you very much. Certainly look forward to the partnership ahead. Thank you.
And as you all know, certainly last but not least, probably most, is my team, my Human Resources team. I have Tiffany Martin, Assistant Director, and Ms. Kadetra Ortiz. Where's Ms. Kadetra? They are the architects of this program. They made it happen and developed that program. We know we got awesome team members at Team Savannah, and I'm so fortunate to have both of them on our team, on my team and our team, Team Savannah. Thank you.
Thank you. It's really important that if we're good enough to train them, we should be good enough to keep them.
That's right.
And keep them here in our city. Mr. Melder?
Yes, sir.
I know I threw that on you.
Yeah. Well, just a huge, big shout out to the HR team and for the work that they're doing. And these interns are coming in that are part of Team Savannah. We're a historic city with a big, big future. We're also a college town. And for Team Savannah, for 2,700 strong, so many of them are alums of Savannah Tech, of Georgia Southern, and of Savannah State. And this city moves on people power, and it moves on the power and the education and experience that our employees had at their colleges and at their institutions. And we're so proud to be able to formalize this partnership, because you can do and learn so much in city government. It's something new every day, and really is all about experiential learning. And we need the best and the brightest. We need to be able to make sure that we're taking great students and helping them transform into great public servants, which is what we're all about. So thank you so much.
Mr. Melder, Mr. Mayor, I have a request that as we engage these interns, and I was once an intern at Chatham County as a graduate student, it's from the Savannah State. But what I am requesting is that we give some of these interns an opportunity to spend time with the Aldermen and Alderwomen as a part of their program. I think that would be a great asset to their matriculation through this internship program.
Great idea, Alderman. We'll do that. Thank you.
Let's do it.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
This is a great day for Savannah. Too often, we always say about getting our students, our children, labor force ready. When we say you can go anywhere from the Savannah State, we can also go anywhere from Savannah Tech, because most of the people, those are skills that, some people don't want to go to college, right? But then, you know, you can go afterwards, so I appreciate Savannah Tech, sir. And I appreciate the teachers that come out of Georgia Southern. And so this is really a great day to see people connected with us so that they don't have to leave. This is just a step in the right direction. Thank you for what each of you do, and thank you, Team Savannah. Thank you, Jeff. Go Kadetra and go Tiffany. Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to acknowledge Savannah State University in the House. Just want you to know, I'm a proud graduate of the Savannah State University. And we are so glad of what is happening here. The synergy of coming together with our students and, you know, I'm just kind of partial with Savannah State, so with our mayor also being a graduate of the Savannah State University and making sure that something like this. Haven't seen it before, Mr. Mayor, but something like this. This marriage coming together with our students and our city and working together, and like he just said, just real-life learning here in our city. So you can stay here. We don't want you to leave. And also with our other universities, Savannah Tech and Georgia Southern, thank you all so much for all that you pour into our city. So all of you interns, we don't want you, you can go to the airport or to the train station or to the bus station to go take a trip, but we need the address right here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Miller Blakely.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. To the President of Savannah Technical College, I want to announce to you that I will be starting a foundation on behalf of my husband, who passed away on July the 26th of this year. We're going to start a foundation for the trades, and we're going to give two students at Savannah Technical College scholarships for their training on behalf of my husband. And I'm so glad that you're here, so that I could say this publicly, so that everybody knows that that's what's getting ready to happen on behalf of Hollis Mitchell.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Have to get accustomed. Congratulations to Team Savannah for what you're doing. And as I say, this is a great thing to each of the presidents, and thank you for the partnership. I did not receive a degree from the Savannah State University or the Georgia Southern University, but Dr. Whirl, I did. You won't hold it against me? I did have an opportunity over the years to teach in the Public Administration Program at the Savannah State University. So we're just pleased to have this partnership, and thank you for what you're doing, all that you're doing. Sure it's going to be successful.
Thank you. Almet Purte.
Okay. Well, I guess I am an alumni of Georgia Southern University, the Georgia Southern University, so thank you for that. The partnerships that we forge are extremely important, and at least on the South Side, where our Armstrong campus sits, there's a strong sense of those educational institutions in the community. And they become basically a marriage, if you would, blending our community in together. And what I've noticed is a lot of the folks that go to school there tend to want to stay and live in that community nearby, and they want to work here in the community. So thank you all so much for the important work that you are doing to educate our future leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. This is something that was really important to me. Our success is tied to our succession. And the reality is that we are not here always, and so we have to train folks to be here. Like Alderman and Neil, I was an intern at Chatham County. As a graduate student and a little bit afterwards, and ended up being able to retire from where I interned, because I was looking to go other places. But the reality was that the internship kept me here. So as a proud graduate of the Savannah State, I'm a tiger. We're a proud graduate of the Georgia Southern, I'm an eagle. But I have got to enroll in Savannah Tech. I am seeking to be the EGOT of it all, so I don't know what Savannah Tech is. What y'all, y'all at Savannah Tech? Yeah. All right. Whatever it is, I'm going to do it, so that I will say I'm the EGOT of education here. We have centers of excellence here that folks can go and compete all over the world.
That's right.
And so why should we send that talent around the world when we can't get it first? We want the best and brightest, and we want them here. So thank you all so much for the parts that you've played. And tell those kids, get ready, because we're going to work them.
Yes, sir.
We're going to work them, so thank you all. Thank you. October 10? All right. Well, you got to tell me what I'm going to be, though, because I'm an eagle, I'm a tiger. I know September 15? All right. Well, y'all, how do we know? How we know? SavannahTech.edu/mascot. All right. So the Savannah Tech Savanians. Kraken next. Otters? We have otters here? Yeah. We do?
We know a lot about stoners.
Our city manager, our city manager never misses the opportunity. He said, it's odderly amazing, so. We're looking forward to it. Thank you so much. Thank you all. Thank you. All right, and so I pushed this back because we needed to, because everyone is always asking. And so now, really, the most important part of the meeting, the presentation of the Employee Engagement Team and recognition of the 2025 Second Quarter Employee of the Quarter Award winners. So here they come. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. I'm going to bring up our Employee Engagement Team and our Chair of the Employee Engagement Team, Ms. Christina Chandler. So Christina?
Hey, 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 y'all. How are you? We're back. Okay, I'll let everybody get in and get settled. There's a couple of our members who are outside. And these are for you as well. Okay, we're good? I know Toys outside. Okay. Okay, got you. Okay, and do we have all of our, okay, I believe we have everybody. No, I got you.
All right, let's go ahead and get started.
Okay, got you. All righty, so hello, everyone. Again, yes, my name is Christina Chandler. I am the Chair of the Employee Engagement Team. And before I get into it, I do just want to make sure that I give my flowers to the team while they are here, while they can hear it, and it's for everyone. Again, I wouldn't be up here if it wasn't for the efforts of our team, from the pop-ups to the scoring, to even getting the checks and the certificates together. Again, I really appreciate y'all, and I just want y'all to know, y'all are really making an impact, so I'm really excited. Okay, so today, we're going to celebrate, I like to call them our City of Savannah celebrities, because they're Employee of the Quarter. I want to talk to you a little bit about the why, the how, and the who. So why we do this. Here at the City of Savannah, we know that happy employees drive powerful results. When you feel valued, supported, and seen, everyone wins, from our departments to our entire community. That's why recognizing the outstanding public service that our employees offer isn't just a nice gesture, but it's a part of our culture. These honorees make Savannah proud, and we want to give them the appropriate recognition for their elite job performance. So how the program works, every quarter, one rock star from each service center is honored as the Employee of the Quarter. And if you're chosen, you receive a $1,000 cash award, 24 hours of incentive leave, a frame certificate, a feature on our social media website, and a chance to win Employee of the Quarter. So again, we've talked about the why. We will discuss the who. Mr. Jay Melder is going to introduce them to y'all. And yeah, so let's go ahead and give our attention to Jay. He's going to announce our second quarter 2025 Employees of the Quarter.
All right. Thanks, Christina. Let's give it up for the Employee Engagement Team. Again, all these winners. All of our Employee of the Quarter winners are chosen by their colleagues, by their peers, and that's what makes this really, really special. And we've got one per service center, so can I get a drum roll, please, for community services? Our Employee of the Quarter, Ms. Brittany Kempson, Administrative Assistant at the Moses Jackson Advancement Center. She's been with the city a year and is already making a huge difference. Brittany has quickly made a remarkable impact at the Advancement Center, revamping the website, creating community. Past presentations, improving how we track attendance and foot traffic. She supports residents with empathy, flexibility, recognizing the challenges many face with transportation and scheduling. And those Saturday job training programs fall outside of her job description. Brittany volunteers her time without hesitation, showing her commitment to community and continuous improvement, and that's why you, Brittany, are the Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations. Keep serving hard. For Government Operations, Your Employee of the Quarter, Mr. Benjamin Mitchell, Maintenance Crew Chief, Historic Squares and Park Maintenance. Mr. Mitchell has been with the City of Savannah for 21 years. Ben takes pride in keeping Savannah clean, safe, and beautiful, always going above and beyond in park and street maintenance. During a cemetery cleanup, he paused his task to help grieving families locate loved ones, offering comfort and care in emotional moments. Off-the-clock, Coach Benny mentors young men through sports, guiding them with structure, discipline, and heart. His leadership extends far beyond his city duties, and that's why, Coach Benny, you are Employee of the Quarter. Thank you. For Information and Public Affairs, Ms. Jessica Primus, Customer Service Representative, 311 Action Center. Jessica, also an early stunner with just one year of service in the City of Savannah, making a big difference, offering accurate, timely, and compassionate support to every caller, treating each situation with care, especially during high-stress moments, which we know you get a lot at the 311 Call Center. She regularly volunteers at workshops and events and plays a key role in mentoring new staff. Her calm demeanor, reliability, and strong sense of service help create a culture of excellence and support within 311, and that's why you, Jessica, are Employee of the Quarter. Thank you so much. Good work. If you'd like to talk to Jessica, just dial 311. And for Management Services, Mr. Robert Mitchell Jr., Surplus Inventory Technician in our Purchasing Department. Mr. Mitchell has been with the city for over eight years and known for his professionalism, positivity, and willingness to help others. His outstanding sales performance on gov deals lead the city exceeding $1 million in asset recovery, meaning that we're getting $1 million because of this man's hard work and earned the city a rebate from gov deals. Outside of work, Robert volunteers through faith-based programs, uplifting families, and serving the community with compassion. And that's why you, Robert, are Employee of the Quarter. Thank you so much. And good work on that $1 million bucks.
Yeah, find some more.
For Planning and Economic Development, Ms. Serena Davis, Senior Administrative Assistant, Planning and Urban Design. Serena's been with us for almost six years now and manages our public notifications for zoning items, mailing, signage, and announcements, keeping everything compliant and on schedule. She handles residents' concerns with professionalism and grace, turning confusion into clarity and encouraging civic participation. Even during a recent vacation, she stayed connected to ensure projects stayed on track, demonstrating exceptional dedication to her work. And I know that firsthand, and that's why you, Serena, are Employee of the Quarter. Good work.
Come on.
Great job. Okay. For the Savannah Fire Department, Your Employee of the Quarter, Angela Cowell, Quartermaster, Savannah Fire. Angela, with six and a half years of service, she leads with empathy, knowing that every supply request supports someone's life, safety, and saving mission. She implemented a, come on, Angela, come on. She implemented a digital tracking system that reduced order errors by over 30%, streamlining our operations. She often volunteers before and after hours to ensure accurate deliveries. Her commitment and care make her invaluable asset to the department, and that's why you,
Yeah, Angela.
Phenomenal job. Okay, Savannah Police Department, Your Employee of the Quarter, Corporal Duchan Williams, STD Forensics. Come on, Duchan. Where are you? There he is. Corporal Williams, with just over 12 years of service to the City of Savannah, handles complex digital evidence with precision, often working long hours to support high-profile cases. He trains and mentors colleagues, supports community events, and serves as a trusted peer support specialist. His technical skills are matched by his compassion, making him a go-to person during crises and a pillar of quiet leadership, and that's why you, Corporal, are Employee of the Quarter.
Come on, Duchan.
Well done. And for our Service Department, always on the run in the summer, Water Resources, Your Employee of the Quarter, Tuve, Civil Engineer, Water Resources Planning and Engineering.
Tuve is too much.
Tu is coming up on five years of service with the City of Savannah. He leads intern recruitment. He leads intern recruitment and onboarding while managing real-world infrastructure projects, bridging innovation and mentorship. His work in systems modeling and data analysis improves sewer reliability and community health. Before a recent storm, Tu prepared infrastructure reports in advance, anticipating needs and demonstrating his commitment to keeping Savannah safe. And that's why, Tu, you are Employee of the Quarter.
Yeah.
Let's give a big round of applause to all of our Employees of the Quarter. To our Employee Engagement Team, thank them. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for the support you continuously give Team Savannah, especially those who are serving at the front lines in our community.
Yay, Team Savannah, woo-hoo.
Another big round of applause. Again, we are so excited. Thank you. And so for those of us who would say this is not city business, we say it is. It is a poor frog that doesn't praise his own pond. And so these are the individuals whose names you may not see, but they make sure that the work gets done. And we are blessed to call them our colleagues, and thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for allowing this opportunity. Another round of applause. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Employee Engagement Team. Thank you all. Now I'm gonna recognize, I add something else. I'm taking another moment to person privilege. I'm gonna recognize the City Manager for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you, as all of you know, we recently went through a national recruitment process for our Chief Operating Officer. We made that announcement several weeks ago, but I would like to introduce to you Sasha Carlisle, who began this week, as our new Chief Operating Officer. As a bit of an introduction, Sasha is a seasoned public finance executive with his distinguished career spanning nearly 20 years in local, state, and federal government. She most recently served as the Deputy Assistant Secretary for Budget and Programs at the U.S. Department of Transportation, where she led the department's budget formulation, execution, enterprise risk management, performance, and program evaluation across multi-billion-dollar programs. She also served as Chief Administrative Officer for the District Department of Transportation. Prior to her roles at the U.S. DOT and DDOT, she also had leadership roles with the U.S. Department of Treasury, where she served as the Director of Office and Financial Management and was the inaugural Director of Shared Services at the Treasury Department, which is a huge, huge job. She also led the District of Columbia's citywide budget process as a part of the Executive Office of the Mayor there. We're very, very proud to have Sasha join us at Team Savannah. And I wanted to introduce her to council and to the public today and allow her to introduce herself. Sasha.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I am excited to be here. Your weather is beautiful, if this week is any example of that. And I just could not be more tickled to get the opportunity to serve the people of Savannah. So I'm excited to be here. I thank you in advance for your willingness to let me serve here in the community, and I look forward to many, many wonderful years to come here in the city. So thank you so much.
Welcome. Aldo Woman, Aldo Bryant. Ms. Meldor, one moment, please. Aldo Woman, Aldo Bryant.
Ms. Sasha, we want to keep having a woman in that role. Thank you very much, minding our money. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome to Team Savannah.
Ms. Meldor, if you would go back, please. One other item of very significant importance. Yesterday, Jay Meldor had a birthday.
I was... Yes.
I said it.
That was yesterday.
Yes, it is.
All right, and today, so we're celebrating today.
Yes.
So if we're able to finish this meeting before the sun goes down, we want you to join us across the hallway. We're gonna celebrate the birthday of Joseph A. Meldor.
Come on. Yeah.
All right, folks, let's get to it. Wanted to move around, extend things for expediency. I wanted to draw your attention on item number 22, Approval to Remit to Savannah Airport Commission's Committed Funding to the 2033 Strategic Plan Initiative in the amount of $250,000.
So move, sir.
There's a second. Probably move the second in all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. That Burger King brawl has been broke for a moment. It's an issue. It's an issue. Thank you very much. Going to our alcohol license hearings, we have two. Approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine alcohol license with Sunday sales to Miranda Pierce for Kim's Cafe Midtown and Restaurant located at 714 Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard between West Gwinnett and West Hall Streets in Allmatty District 2. And item number eight, Approval of a Class C liquor beer and wine alcohol license with Sunday sales to Vasili's or Largas for the Olympia Cafe and Restaurant located at 5 East River Street, located between Drayton Street and Abacoine Street ramps in Allmatty District 2. This is a public hearing that I'm now declaring open. Does anyone have anything against either one of these licenses? Anyone have anything against either one of these licenses? Speak now if ever hold your peace. Second time. Third time.
Ms. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we close the hearing, please.
Second.
Probably move the second in all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number seven, Aldo Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I ask that we approve the Class C liquor beer and wine alcohol license with Sunday sales to Miranda Pierce for Kim's Cafe Midtown.
Second.
Second. And probably move the second in all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number eight, Aldo Manley.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I ask that we approve the Class C liquor beer and wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Vasili's, I don't want to mess his name up, for Olympia Cafe Restaurant in Second District.
Second.
Probably move the second in all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Y'all go forth and be great. Thank you very much. Moving to our public hearings, this is a public hearing on state mandated annual update to the Community Work Program portion of the capital improvements element adopted by City Council in February 2023, which amended the Chatham-Savannah Comprehensive Plan in 2040. The update is required each year to comply with the Georgia Development Impact Act and maintain Savannah's qualified local government certification as prescribed by the minimum standards and procedures for local comprehensive planning adopted by DCA pursuant to the Georgia Planning Act of 1989. So this is a public hearing, and which I now declare open. Anyone have any comment regarding this item? Go on once. Go on twice.
Mr. Mayor?
One moment. Third time, speak now if ever hold your peace. Aldo Manchevans.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Probably move the second in all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. The companion item is item number 18.
18.
Is there a motion regarding this?
What's your number?
Item number 18.
Mr. Mayor, move for approval of item number 18.
Second emotion.
And probably move the second in all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Moving on to item number 10.
That was number 18?
Yes.
9 and 18, Ms. Gretchen.
Please cut your microphones off if you're not being used. Thank you. Thank you. Under ordinance to the second reading petition of Hotendra Patel and DePica Patel for zoning map amendment of 1.76 acres at 1402 Styles Avenue from BL Business Limited to be in neighborhood business with conditions in Allmatty District 1. This is the second reading. I believe we've held a hearing at the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion regarding this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yes, please let me make a comment. I need to mention that I have a message here from a member of the Cloverdale leadership expressing that the Cloverdale community was still not in favor of this ordinance. And the thought there was, it's not allowing an alcohol license, but it sets... It sets the path. If someone wanted to come there and apply for an alcohol license, they could do that, which we know is another process. The other neighborhood, the budding neighborhood where the property actually sits, and the Carver Village community, they are in support of this measure, but I wanted to make sure that was a part of the record. So I'd like to move for the approval of this petition of Hotendra Patel and DePica Patel for a zoning map amendment of this property at 1402 Styles Avenue.
Second.
Probably move the second. I was gonna lift that as well. It was reiterated to me that the Cloverdale Neighborhood Association was still against this. And the concern is really about not necessarily current use, but once you've turned a non-conforming use into a conforming use, then obviously the implications of that use are, go into the future, into eternity. And so their concern is not necessarily this particular petition, but what happens when the zoning changes. So let's go to the board on that, please.
And let me mention that is correct. That's why we place some conditions in here to sort of mitigate what they're able to do in this area.
That's fine. Thank you. All right, we're going to the board, and the motion, I believe it will... Aldo Woman Bell? All right, motion passes. Five to four. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number 11, Petition of P. Bart Smith on behalf of Progressive One Realty LLC for a future land use amendment of 0.2 acres from residential suburban. And again, y'all have to hit it twice. You have to hit it twice. It's a little different operation. For future land use amendment of 0.2 acres for residential suburban, single-family to commercial neighborhood at 1103 E 69th Street. This is a second reading as well. Is there a motion regarding this?
I had asked for some additional time, but the petitioner is here. And the problem that I had was the drive-in with an already congested area. But he's told me, and he's here, and I'd like for him to come to the podium, please, sir. We had a lot of discussion about that. And the only problem that I had was the drive-in, and he's been very gracious. And so I just wanted to make a motion to approve it and stand on that in the conversation we had, because he's pulled the section 11 and 12 are married to each other. They're not seeking the drive-on component. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. The drive-through component, that was the issue that we had there. Yes, sir. Thank you so much for that, too, Mrs. Smith. Thank you for the extensive conversations in that community. So, Mr. Mayor, I would let this second reading be a motion to approve the petitioner's request to seek future land use map amendment from residential suburban, single-family to commercial neighborhood, please, sir.
Second. And probably move the second in all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number 12 is petition of P. Bart Smith on behalf of Progressive One Realty LLC for a zoning map amendment of 0.2 acres from OI Office Industrial to be in neighborhood business with conditions at 1103 E 69th Street in Allmatty District 3. Aldo Woman.
That's the one we were talking about, sir. Mr. Meldor, can we just erase that from... How do we do that? Because the petitioner has said that...
So I think if you...
How do we word this?
The recommendation is with the conditions.
I can't hear you, sir.
One was plumbing, one was for zoning.
Yes.
But the, if you just, if you're looking to approve with the conditions that there's no drive-through component. The recommendation is that includes three conditions. One, that the drive-through component be removed from the development plan as the proposed stacking length does not meet the minimum 160-foot requirement and is anticipated to create traffic congestion that may negatively affect circulation on adjacent neighborhood streets. That's condition one. Condition two, that the rezoning be tied to the conceptual site configuration review through the zoning process. And the third condition is that the site plan must come back to the MPC for the review process. So if you, so all three of those conditions are in the item as recommended.
But that's why I asked Mr. Smith to come to the podium, because he has said that he's removing it from that site plan. And this is the first where the person, based on your recommendations, said that he's in agreement with that, and that's how I wanted to... This is a president. So how do we...
If you're looking to approve it, then I would just make a motion to approve as recommended.
Well, here's the thing. I don't want to approve your recommendations when we don't need the recommendations, because they're pulling it.
Well, I think that the conditions should still be...
Still in place, okay.
The zoning still has to be approved.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the petition with conditions from the city recommendation and his statement saying that they have pulled it off of the design for their...
And probably move the second in all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? A motion passes. Let's look under the purchasing items. I'm pulling number 16.
I just want to say for the record that it was a pleasure working with Mr. Smith, and while we did not agree on everything, he was not disagreeable. I'm gonna tell you what Vance says. It's gonna be great. We like your restaurant. We especially like it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, under 13, 17, I'm pulling 16.
16.
If there are no more other items to be pulled under purchasing items, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of items number 13 through 15 and 17.
Second.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Pull number 13, please.
All right, pulling 13.
I'd like to amend my motion for the approval of items under purchasing, item number 14, 15, and 17.
Second emotion.
And probably move the seconded. Item number 14 is authorize city manager execute a contract for rebuilding one primary clarifier in an amount not to exceed $800,000. Item number 15 is authorize city manager execute a contract for SCADA annual maintenance for supervisory control and data acquisition system with Layer 3 Communications LLC in an amount not to exceed $126,291. And item number 17 is authorize city manager execute a contract with Crystal Line LLC for the reconstruction of tennis courts at Bacon Park in an amount not to exceed $148,240. You've heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number 13, authorize city manager execute a contract for 27 mowers from John Deere Care or Beard Equipment in an amount of $105,788. 27 mowers will be purchased from Beard Equipment. The dealers cost, and no markup included in the purchase price, Aldo Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I applaud you all for actually purchasing these lawn mowers. It's gonna save our taxpayers a lot of money. But I also read in the summary where the lawn mowers will be resold. They're gonna be sold back to who? And if the constituents can purchase them, how do they go about doing it? When you say resold, can you explain what resold is?
Whenever we retire any kind of vehicle that we own from our service, we sell them through gov deals, just like we have the Employee of the Quarter. I can send out information to council that you can then share with the public on how people can go and look to see what's for sale on gov deals. And we've got, we sell cars, we sell lawn mowers, et cetera, all things that we're retiring from our service that we own outright. We sell on gov deals.
Now, let me ask you this. Is it possible that we could, for our Young People Program, the Summer 100 Program, is it possible that we could let these young people that work this program, that want to become lawn care workers and what have you, that we could possibly allow them some kind of way to get the lawn mowers, to learn how to repair them, or whatever the case may be, if something like that possible?
Let me, I think that's a great idea. Let me come back to you in two weeks with how, with what the possibilities are there.
Sounds good. Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for 27 mowers from John Deere at the purchase of $105,788.
Second.
Probably move the second in all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number 16 is authorize city manager execute a contract for reconstruction of basketball courts at 11 neighborhood parks throughout the city with Courtmakers Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $252,870. These outdoor courts are experiencing fate, cracking, fading, and equipment deterioration. I pulled this because I remembered when I was first District Aldo Woman. I pulled this because I remembered when I was first district Alderman, I used a portion of the SPOSS funds that when we had SPOSS funds that allocate to districts to be able to refurbish the basketball courts throughout our district. These courts are heavily used by young people. We want them to be outside. We want them to play. We want them to be engaged. And so therefore, the courts should be able to represent something that the neighborhood and more importantly, the young people want to play on and something that is fun. I would love one day to get to the point where we have something that's a little easier on the knees. I went out and tried to play, and I went out with an injury pretty quickly, just all of that asphalt. But I want to thank city manager and of course our Recreation Reimagine for continuing to make sure that we are not waiting until they are beyond repair to keep them up and maintain them. My only question would have been, when does this occur? Obviously, the winter months are coming, so I guess it's a really fine window before when you should do it, so it's ready for the spring, but you don't want to do it too early, that the weather does not impact it. So I don't know if you could answer that question particularly, Mr. Manager, or?
I'll try to get an answer before we break today.
That's fine. Thank you. Alderman Lanier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to mention about this item that when staff came forth with the recommendations for these resurfacing, there were some other things being requested and considered around the parks. In the first district, we have the Charlie Sad Brian and Woodville Park that's going to be resurfaced. The Hudson Hill Park and the Kennedy Park in Carver Village, the Wells Park, actually in a second. Okay, so I wanted to say about the Hudson Hill Park, not only the residents there, the leadership there, they were a little bit more concerned about some safety issues around the park with the basketball court being directly against the street and the sidewalk. They were concerned that they had been requesting some safety fencing for there and the playground area, which is also abutting the streets. Well, in talking to management and them doing what they do, we're going to be able to do the resurfacing of the park, the basketball court, the replacement of the hardware, and in addition, staff is going to be able to take care those two critical areas where the ball keeps rolling in the street or where the kids might dash into the street near the basketball court and the playground. And I want to thank you all for being able to take care of that along with this, because the upgrading to the basketball courts adds to the aesthetics. And it's always a welcome community asset to do this type of work. It does something psychologically when we keep those courts up and that equipment up. But to take care of that safety issue in the process, I want to thank you all for doing that work. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, thank you, the residents for the blessing we need for. We appreciate it.
So I'd like to move at this time to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the reconstruction of basketball courts at eleven neighborhood parks throughout the city with Courtmakers.
Second.
And probably move to second. And, Mr. Manager, I would really be interested in us ultimately settling a few sites, and I've seen this, where the basketball courts are covered. Yeah, I'm sure you've seen them. In DC, they have them where it's covered to the point where you're not playing necessarily in the heat of the day, and that might be a really good policy. You know, it gets disrespectfully hot in Savannah. And that might help also to maintain the courts for a longer period of time. Just a thought.
Thank you, Mayor. We're aware of those. There's a few in the county.
Yeah.
We'll look to see how we can incorporate those. The contract here that's being considered, the work would begin in late October, November after the kind of the seasonal use of the court slows down.
Right.
And we hope to have all the courts finished by the end of this year.
All right, well, thank you. Now, one other thing, because when I did it years ago, we actually worked with the communities to help to color and determine the colors that kind of went along with the neighborhood's style, so to speak. I don't know if you're able to do that. I guess some of the, I know the ones in the first district had that, so, you know, hopefully it'll be reflected in those communities. It helped them take ownership of it.
And the fifth, too, same thing, yeah.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion pass. Yes, ma'am.
We did a walkthrough, and so not included in this, because this part was in the budget. I just wanted to check on the status after this about Somerset off of Watley Avenue. We wanted the same thing to happen. Yeah, off of Watley Avenue, Parkwood and Firwood.
Sunset.
Sunset. Off of Watley, please. We want to make sure that we consider that too for the same thing. That was part of the conversation. I don't see that.
Sunset.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it's in there.
At three, so that's two times. I digress. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. That was quick.
All right, thank you. Item number nineteen is authorize city manager to execute a lease use agreement with the FBI.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Telecommunication space on city telecommunications tower. No, we ain't doing that. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Is there a motion?
I'm moved to adopt this in the item as written.
Is there a second? Probably move to second. Y'all can hear me say that. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number twenty.
Did we say something about seventeen? I mean, we passed it, but I wanted to reiterate, do we have enough space? We have been promising the people on the south side of the third district for a place, not a gymnasium, but a meeting place like they have at the park. Please consider that when we do part of our budgeting this year for an attachment, because there is a lot of activity on the court over there, and we are wanting to use that space in Bacon Park, that empty land. I just want to put that on the record that we're still requesting that we have a meeting place for our seniors and our community people over on that side. We have one on the east side, and thank you for the full-size court. We have nothing on the south side of that district. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item number twenty, authorize the approval of a major subdivision named Camilla Trail subdivision located in intersection of Montgomery Cross Road and Hospital Memorial Drive. The proposed subdivision equals one point seven two acres, which consists of nine single-family lots with varying light lot sizes. Is there a motion?
So move, sir.
Second. Probably move to second. In all the favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number twenty-one, authorize supplemental budget appropriations to fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating and capital improvement plan program is outlined from the city manager in previous documents.
I'm moved to adopt this in the item as written.
Second.
Probably move to second. In all the favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, that ends our printed agenda, which means that the party for Jay Melder is.
Let's go.
Are there any brief announcements?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, we have one.
Well, we'll start with Alderman Lanier. We'll come all the way down.
Yes, thank you. I have three quick announcements. I want to send condolences to the Small family of Vanessa Taylor Small and her family on the loss of their mother, Wanda's mother, Ms. Picola Smalls. There's been so many funerals lately. Also, I just wanted to announce on this weekend at the Pressboy Park in Calhoun Brownsville, there will be a gathering with Pastor Lowe and some other pastors at the park there in Calhoun Brownsville. The Home Bar Reunion, the annual home bar reunion, I think they're in their seventy-some year on the Hudson Hill Park will be this Saturday, and also we will have a Whipper game with the Stallions. The Whipper and the Stallion having a bowl game in Carver Village at the Kennedy Park on this weekend. So lots to do, lots to do in the first district this weekend. Thank you very much.
It's men's season. It's football this weekend, so don't root for the Falcons.
We want to pray for the soul of Alexis Milton, the sixteen-year-old. His vigil is on next Thursday on Wyoming Street at six o'clock. We want to also, Shaboni Pitts, we did a vigil and it was well-attended. I want to thank Moms Demand Action Pack, LV Three, Chatham County Sheriff's Department, Mrs. Section and Carriage Tours showed up and showed out, and Savannah Police Department. Thank you so much, Chief Gunter, for sending that to this vigil. We had over almost two hundred people showed up. Thank you.
Alderman pass. You have anything?
No, I didn't mention that.
You have anything?
Oh, yeah, Bernita.
You want to say?
Yes, 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 yes. I want to also, Bernita Bishop, Bernita Smalls, she passed. She was a mentor, a neighbor, babysitter her kids. She passed last week. She, she, it was a big fight, and so we want to make sure that we hold everybody who's lost someone, who people are sick, and we want to fight for things that impact our neighborhood and shore people up and let them know that they value us. We need to value people. When we value people, we get all the productivity out of the community that needs. And I want to say hello to my friend Joyce Campbell. Hello.
Thank you.
I would like to just continue what Alderman Wilder Bryant was referring to with Bishop Bernita Rivers Smalls. Her memorial service will be held on this coming Wednesday at First African Baptist Church. The memorial service will start at seven o'clock at First African Baptist Church on Wednesday. She will lie in state at First African Baptist Church from three o'clock until seven o'clock on Wednesday. Her home-going celebration will be held on Thursday, starting at twelve noon at Restoration Praise and Worship Ministries on Waters, I think it's thirty-nine ten, on Waters Avenue, where Apostle Dorothy Tanksley Church is located. So we just sent our condolences out to her family and friends, and we'll be there to support the family.
And she was the graduate of Savannah State. Condolences, Elvia and Phyllis.
Absolutely.
Alderman Blumbo, I'm coming down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have plans on September fifth at eight PM? Well, now you do. It is movie night at Hall Park, featuring the Parks and Recreation Team of Team Savannah. One night only at eight PM at Hall Park and the Splash Pad. Game activities begin at six thirty from seven forty-five PM, and the movie premiere begins at eight PM, but one night only. Come and see it in Hall Park.
Thank you. Alderman Perty.
Okay, appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. First of all, we have been celebrating this holiday for the past hundred and thirty-one years, believe it or not, Americans have. And remember, this holiday is dedicated to those hard-working Americans, Savanians, Georgians, that go out there and build our community and make it work and make it work for us. So Happy Labor Day to all of you out there, especially hard-working folks. The next thing I want to say is it is the weekend. It's a holiday weekend, and spend some time with your family. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we're spending time with each other and checking on each other. And with the recent events we've had in Savannah with some of our youth, please check up on some of the youth. If you do not have kids, be a parent, right? You know, be a mentor. Be somebody that can go out there and help mentor a child, because Lord knows right now they need it. So just be safe this weekend.
Thank you. Alderman Lake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mirror what Alderman Perty just said. Y'all just please be safe, pay attention to your surroundings, and take the time to tell somebody you love them, because you never know when they're not gonna be here, okay? Happy Labor Day, Savannah.
Thank you. Alderman Bell.
Just an extension of the announcement that Alderman Bryan and Mayor Pro Tim Shabazz Mae Regarny passed the Bernita Green Smalls. She also is a past city employee.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, do you have anything? Mr. Clerk, do you have anything? Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Happy Labor Day to all.
Yeah, so ladies and gentlemen, again, I want to thank Team Savannah, and I want to do it publicly. People often can find ways to complain. But I will tell you that particularly over the last couple of weeks in addressing monumental issues of challenges of weather and water and sinkholes, Team Savannah has been there, Johnny on the spot, making sure not only are they assessing, but informing and communicating. Mr. Melder, on behalf of council, if you would, make sure that the team knows how much we appreciate them. Because it's easy for folks to complain. It's something different for folks to be out there working. So I thank Team Savannah for all that they do. And so thank you all so much, for all of you that are here. The Jay Melder Party Boots on the Ground Part Two going on across the hallway. Wear a jersey. Like real cowboy boots on the ground.